Everyone here. We've got kind of two meetings tonight, right?
Right.
We've got the regular meeting and then the organizational meeting. You guys, you guys can come to the front if you want to. It's okay, you can stay back there if you're in the coffeehouse if that's what you want to do, that's fine.
I can hear a word.
Yeah. Too bad. So, I just want to remind everybody that East Sat County Schools empower all students to become productive, responsible citizens of an ever-changing global society. And we should keep that in mind when, as we're going to our meeting today. Okay, we need to amend the agenda. We gotta add a couple of things. Seven C and five K. Seven C is discussing or approve the WLBA Foundation members. We've got that information after we publish. Five K is, is in the annual meeting and that's one more board for Grant to represent for us. So I take a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, name? Motion carried. Okay, John, go ahead.
All right. Any questions on the minutes from August eighteen? Okay, I marked quite a few things on the bills, so I'll get through them pretty quick and then you can ask me anything I missed. First of all, there's twenty or thirty bills in there for non-public transportation reimbursement. And that's money that's applied for by people in our district who go to Kemper, St. Mary's. We receive money from the state, we reimburse it to the families, it doesn't cost us anything. That totaled about seventeen or eighteen thousand dollars out of the hundred and, I think about a hundred and fifty in the general fund. And then the next biggest portion was Medicaid reimbursement, which is the percentage that we have to send to the state. That was twenty-three thousand. So on the first page, the bill to Amazon was for some professional development supplies, books, and technology supplies. Card member services, specialized supplies and tech supplies again. On the next page, ICN. You don't see this bill very often because we usually end up paying it here in the fall and then E-rate kicks in and we have enough credit to get this through the year. So, that's for two months' worth of internet service and we've applied for E-rate, so when that comes through, you probably won't see that bill for a while then. A little farther down, John Deere Financial for about seventeen hundred, that's a lot more in tractor repairs. Marco for seventy-one hundred is repairs and supplies on copiers in all of our buildings.
Are copiers, are they on lease program now?
They're on a, they started out, they're about three years old now. We had them on a service agreement and then we had them with our insurance company and we're going back to the lease agreement because it's a better deal.
Yeah.
So, we're in the middle of that right now, waiting here back from Marco. Odysseyware is a software license and we pay for that out of our modified allowable growth to drop off to Denji.
That's one year, right?
That's one year, yes. Office Elements for eighty-nine hundred, that is, three thousand of that we're gonna move over to the lost fund before we send the checks because it was for a copier in our office. And the other roughly six thousand is for toner for printers and supplies, so make that last all year, Beth. Opera Iowa's twenty-one fifty, we talked about that last month, but we'll get most of that back, or a lot of that back, from the other groups that are participating. But we went ahead and paid the balance in full and then we'll be reimbursed. Anything else on that page?
Yeah, John, talk a little bit about that Sat County Trader property taxes.
That's property taxes for our farm ground for two thousand and fourteen. And we're working with the assessor now because if we don't cash rent that out, there's a way we won't have to pay that if we farmed ourselves, so. About being a school or nonprofit.
Which if KFJ does that, it considers.
Right, considers part of our, one of our groups, so Bob's working on that, Bob Fox, and we'll see where that ends up. Thomas Bus Sales, we ordered cameras for the, three of the shuttle buses and those are being installed and that will also be moved to loss before we have the checks. Tiger Direct was, I believe, a hundred batteries for laptops that we moved from this building to the middle school. We got a phone call into the auditor to see if we can move that to loss also, I'm not sure on that one, so. Activity Fund, the build to Decker is primarily football equipment and jerseys. Hummer International is where our FFA is co-op by all the greenhouse supplies, so we're getting that up and going again. Tambourine Foods, I think, is primarily concessions to us and here we go. That's all I had for activity. Mormon Electric for eleven thousand and capital, they did a lot of work in the middle school, the high school and the greenhouse, the end of July and through August, just to get some things up to code and replace some breaker panels, et cetera, so.
Greenhouse warehouse now?
This greenhouse.
Okay.
And they re, they resited that with whatever that glass material is called and redid the wiring too, so. Anything on the lost fund? I think I, it was pretty decent, the explanations in there. Air Corps are a wireless company, so that's the wireless hubs in the middle school and high school, should be the final payment, I think. Any of those that the description didn't cover it for you?
High school showers, sixty-eight hundred.
Two new shower trees in this building in the clothes locker. I think we went from a five head to a four head, the old ones were bad and embarrassing to be caught on this.
Did they be original, or something?
I think they were a little bad.
Originally the shower heads were on the walls, but this would have been the first renovation.
Tree board.
And then on the financial report, for August anyhow, we got the twenty-four month comparison we talked about last month. And we'll just look at the operating fund for now, but we're a little better off than we were a year ago, but we're not quite back to where we were two years ago, so that's.
Both of that sharing money that we're missing.
Still making up for that, so we'll watch both of those numbers in the next three or four months and see which way the trend, trend line's looking. With all the new contracts and stuff starting in September, start to give us an idea, I think. Give me a holler if you have anything on that too. All righty, I'd entertain a motion to approve the bill to Albright Auto for seven forty-three ten.
To move.
Second.
All righty, motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries three zero. Entertaining motion to approve the remaining bills, the financial report, and the August eighteen minutes.
About this tree boss thing.
We can handle that. No, no.
Okay.
The reason not, Beth, is it's one time and the total for the year will be less than twenty-five hundred.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Motion to approve the remaining bills, finances, in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Okay, we'll move on to reports.
I think at your table, we should have a one sheet document that goes label East Sat County Long Range Goals and on the bottom half of the page are annual goals. Do each have one of those?
Yeah. Do you need to make some?
No, I write, oh, that's the right one. Sorry.
Thank you.
May I have one for the leadership, please?
Yep.
Okay, the goals that are on the top half of that page are long range, which means they're five-year goals. So we'll be reporting out on those at the end of this school year because this is the end of our five-year cycle for our school improvement plan. It also coincides with when we have our accreditation as of this year. Earlier, a few years ago, we were asked to report on reading, math, and science. Now we report on core card areas, reading, math, science, and social studies, and then a set of standards called Twenty-First Century Skills. Those are things like financial literacy, employability skills, health literacy, tech literacy, and civic literacy. There are five areas within those Twenty-First Century schools, so we report on the achievement of students in reading, math, science, and social studies in those five Twenty-First Century areas. At the bottom are our annual goals. And those goals are also written and then the results of those displayed up here on the projector. The goals were written for sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade because those were places where we had some achievement, we, issues related to achievement that needed to improve in those areas and there's been significant growth in the district. So, just to make sure that it's clear, this first group that you're gonna be taking a look at is reading. And it's a cohort of students, so it says sixth grade, and it says two thousand twelve thirteen, and then move clear over to the parentheses on the right-hand side. And it said in two thousand twelve thirteen, those students, fifty-four percent of those students made one year's growth. Okay, that's when they were fifth graders. So then when they were sixth graders in thirteen fourteen, sixty-nine percent of those students made one year's growth. So thus, that grade meant the achievement goal, the short-range goal. But before we move forward, one thing to think about is that a student could make a year's growth but may still not be on grade level. So, now we look at growth, but then we look at how do we make even rapid growth so that we can start to catch up with peers and be on grade level. So know that upfront, that's the way it works. Seventh grade, you can look at them, they were in sixth grade, thirty-two percent gained a year's growth. And last year, the seventh grade gained, ninety-four percent of them gained, made a year's growth. And eighth grade, when they were in seventh grade, forty-five percent, and then ninety-seven percent made a year's, made a year's growth last year. So, go now. And we're gonna work through all three content areas first, then you can ask some questions like, so what happened? Okay, I did that most obvious question. You just slide down the sheet of paper, the next set of goals are math. Then again, it's cohort groups, and if you move over to the right-hand side to look at the percentage of kids that made a year's growth. Again, in every one of those grades, the percentage of kids who made one year's growth increased. You look at science, down at the bottom of the page, same thing, so it's cohorts of kids, same kids in grades five, six, and six, seven, and at seven, eight. And you're looking at the percent of kids who gained one year's growth. I'm gonna ask Denny, and I probably should have warned you, Denny, to talk a little bit about what were some of the things that happened last year in the middle school that were different than previous years. And because there's more than one of them, there's not any real definitive answer about it, it was this, it was this one specific thing. But do you want to talk to them about some of the things? We talked about this at a district leadership team meeting and Sophie explained it really well about what some of those actions were that have led to that improvement.
Yeah, last year we moved our Iowa assessment test to the spring, which was new for us, you know, in the last ten years. Teachers felt that that allowed them time to get curriculum taught that's actually tested on the assessments. That hasn't been taught before taking the assessments before. So, they felt that was a big benefit to them to get into that content before the assessment was given. We had done a lot of work in the middle school as well as far as alignment with what we're teaching to the Iowa assessment tests. A lot of times, what was being tested in the Iowa assessment wasn't necessarily what we're teaching in the classroom, so we needed to mesh that a little bit better. Not that we were necessarily teaching to the task, but we needed to close those gaps a little bit. We also started a program last year called Achieve Three Thousand, which was meant for and implemented for about a hundred and thirty of our kids, which were kids struggling with their reading levels. It was nonfiction reading, which is a lot of the type, the same type of reading that kids would get on the Iowa assessment. But it, it's not just, again, about the assessments, it's about, you know, the overarching reading achievement, so that was, that was definitely a positive thing as well. Buy-in is huge. It's hard to tell a middle school kid how the Iowa assessments really benefit them. And in all honesty, if it doesn't benefit them, they don't see any value in it, they don't see any worth in it. And thus, you know, if they can't see that, then it's hard for them to spend much effort, spend much time on it. So, there's quite a bit of conversation between our staff and our students, which there has been over the last several years, we've always known that that was an issue. But it seemed to work a little bit better last year with them. The other thing that I'd say is this is a snapshot, it's a one-year snapshot. Like I told our staff last week, you know, it's like football season, we just had a game, we won this game, but guess what? It's Monday morning now and we've got, we've got work ahead of us until that next game coming up, and we've got another game this spring, so. Take it what it's worth, what it's worth, don't get too high on the highs and don't get too low on lows, so. We're back to work on trying to do what we can do to improve our scores again for this next coming year, so.
So by changing the timeframe, we would assume we would see similar growth this year?
Yes, yeah. One of the things, one of the big things that sticks out to me is our math people said, you know, those Iowa assessments, they really hit on geometry. While we don't teach geometry in our class until March, and we're taking this test in November, so our kids have never seen geometry before, but yet they're being assessed. And we could move geometry to the front of the year, but then what are we moving to the back of the year that's gonna be tested that we're not getting to in time, so.
There are three testing periods for ITBS by test, a fall, a mid-year, and a spring, and you're normed against, normed reference, against the other kids that take the test at the same time. So, when you take it in the spring, it doesn't give you a huge advantage necessarily over someone who's taking it in the fall. Because the fall testing groups are all put in the pot together and compared one to another to determine the percentile ranks, not the percentage, but the percentile ranks. Okay, so then the winter group is all put together and they're compared to each other for percentile rank, and then the spring group is. So they're compared to a group that, that's their norm, taken at the same time in the year. So you're not comparing apples to oranges, you're comparing apples to apples end of the year. But where your content's taught is what seems as if it may, at least on the outside of it, it looked like that was a problem. So that was one of the reasons the spring norming was selected. Our elementary and our high school test in fall.
November, correct.
In the fall norming period, and we'll stay there. Okay, they'll probably stay there.
Is our plan to have this same chart next year, or is it gonna say two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, are these same three to kids, or?
We can, we have.
What is the plan?
The, the annual improvement goals haven't been set yet, but now that we're a large school in the middle school, or at the high school, we'll either need to keep the middle school as part of the annual goals and add high school grades, or the focus will just move, but we can still report on the, on the middle school to you. So that wouldn't be a problem to do. That's on my board folder for October, that will bring those fourteen, fifteen annual goals to you. So it feels better, feels good at the middle school, and now we've just sort of rolled that problem to a, I shouldn't say problem, but you know, now we need to really look at, eleventh grade is the grade we report in. It's the only grade that's reported at high school to keep you on or off the assignment list, so.
So that changes every year, that's not compared to?
No.
It's not the same kids?
No, no. So with our APR reporting, it's different kids every year. So we look at four, eight, and eleven for annual progress to report, that's state law. For reading, math, science, now social studies, and we'll be looking at the Twenty-First Century skill sets. We have a lot of work to do at that Twenty-First Century skill sets, because we don't have anything in place that tests for it. If you think things like employability, financial literacy, civics, health literacy.
I think those are important.
Oh, absolutely. We just had a meeting with some people within the high school and we were just talking about, so what, are there even assessments that assess that? And what we were talking about is there's some workforce development assessments the state of Iowa has, and we need to look at those. Maybe there are whole separate kinds of tests that we give where they're looking at those skills that are really the workplace skills, which absolutely, those are what, those will be what, help you keep a job. Once you have that content and the piece to be able to get the job, so. You'll get some more reports this year on it too, as we march through the year, so anyway. Today was the PD day, so the next thing on the superpenance report was just up late on PD, so elementary teachers met downstairs and they worked on, their focus was on literacy, conformative assessment, and that's part of their C four reading state plan. So the C four K reading has some funding, there are companies that are part of the responsibility or the requirement that has some professional development. There are a couple of people in from the APA today who specialize in C four paperwork and especially early literacy, K four. And so their day today was first looking at data about reading achievement and then making decisions about, so what sort of changes need to have, and what do we need to learn about, and what do we need to do in the classroom. So they'll be working on conformative assessment as a whole K four group. Everyone else on the staff, which is about fifty-five, fifty-eight people, something like that, were up, we started up here, and we're following that PD plan that I showed you last month. And so it was from the website that we've developed. And last PD day, they spent a lot of time learning about effective feedback. And then their requirements for that are implementation in the classroom. Go through peer coaching, so what that means is Jay influence the strategy of effective feedback. And he asked me if I'll be his peer coach, and then we sit down and I actually watch him coach with kids, give effective feedback, and then I give him feedback on the feedback he's giving the kids, so that he can improve his strategies and his skills. And then I might invite him to come into my classroom to do that, and then the principals also are a part of that. So, we're asking teachers to implement the strategies they're learning about, receive peer feedback on them, and then the principals provide feedback at least once in that site. Today was interesting. That doesn't mean bad, but it's sort of sinking in about the expectation a little bit, because there's a lot of questions about, you know, so much paperwork. Well, frankly, they just, we've never asked them to implement and then track their implementation, and implementation just, I've learned it, so I've gotta use it. So we've learned it before and then we just walked away and then we never checked about using it in the classroom, so that feels different to them. So with some of the groups, they work in their professional learning communities, we just said, you know, if you walk downstairs right now to see the elementary, they have all their implementation logs displayed and they're looking at the common data to decide who's implementing, who's not, and what the problems are. So they're used to this, but it's not very common for high schools and middle schools to do it. It doesn't mean that no one is, it's really good practice, but it's very hard to see this through because you're partway through, you're like, wow. For the tenth time, yes, we're gonna do this, and yes, you're gonna turn these in, and here's where you turn it in. There's a lot of technology built into this as well, using new tools, best spend an hour, and then a bunch of us helped her today with those fifty-five or eight, fifty-eight people setting up Dropbox accounts. So that they can file all their required paperwork in a Dropbox account that's shared with their, with their principal. So, most of them didn't know about Dropbox, they didn't know about how to use it, they didn't have an account. And we also introduced them to that so that they can see the value of potentially using it for kids in their classrooms. I taught at BV, I would just have an education four-ten folder, and then I would invite every student in my classroom to it, and that's where they dropped their assignments, I had no paper. And it worked, it was great, it was awesome. They couldn't change their assignments, they couldn't get in and take things in and out because, but once they dropped it, it was timestamped and I knew when it was there. And then I could provide the grade, the grading and the feedback on it, and I could go back in and look at it then. But it's a shared folder that only Jay and I could see that. And it really works slip, and it's way better than getting emails on shared documents like that. So we were explaining to them today, for instance, how to use that. But that takes an hour or more with that many people to really work through it, and then Beth and I went to every one of the small groups and talked to them, they needed various levels of help, and it's like, yes, we are gonna use this. And you know what, I'll help you get started. Now, there's another tool that might work, but right now, this is the one we want everybody in the district to, you know, have downloaded because your principal's gonna send you an invitation, and this is what you're gonna use with him. So, it's just a different feel to it. At the end of the day today, we ask each of the PLC groups to tell us what do they need more help with, do they need more of us, from us? And then what do they want to make sure that they can protect and they can keep doing, and I think we had a really candid conversation, I thought they were really honest. One of the common things was they want snacks and food, and we're like.
Some small popcorn right now, that's all I want.
So we said, well, we can figure that out, but we're not providing it all for you, but yes, we can have food. And they would laugh about, well, part of the thing was a snack bar, and I'm like, well, we can figure out snack bar, but you're gonna have to be responsible for it. But they were pretty thoughtful about what kind of help, they thought we're going to FAPST. Okay, they want definitive deadlines about when certain things are due. We're trying not to do that so that the groups can move at the speed that they need to to learn. Well, we're pre-ano, we really like due dates, and so they're like, well, we're trying really to answer the questions for the people who don't want due dates, so we'll compromise on this. But we have a good list of things to think about and to email them back about. But really, a lot was accomplished today. There are many of them that are very frustrated though, because it's just, it's a different way to learn, and it's like, wow, this feels like a grad class, this is a lot to read, this is a lot to do. We're like, well, you can earn grad credits, so it should feel like a grad class. You know, we're not asking them to do things outside of the PD day though. The implementation, obviously, in their classrooms, but to do their peer coaching and their principal coaching and any of that, we're just saying, that's what, we have a lot of days this year, and that's what we're using these days for. So, can you guys think of other comments from our group, or? I just got a whiff of the popcorn too.
You know, I think a lot of them, one of the things that we, that we heard also was how can we use each other to teach us some of the technology tools that are already in place? We have several teachers that may know DGO and they can, you know, kind of begin to kind of collaborate and share some of their expertise also. That was something that kind of resonated through several of the groups also.
We're requiring new tech tools to be used, but not use it just to use it to support instruction or, you know, or management or those sorts of things, and that's a wide range of skills and abilities. But you know what, we have one-to-one devices in this building, so it, it's got, it's got to look different. And so that's kind of pushing for that, and they're not really pushing back, they're just, it feels like it's a lot of new right now. So they're just like the kids, you know, when you kind of overwhelm them, then you have to take a little inventory and maybe back up just a little bit, slow down and come back at it again, but. So I thought it was the PD day.
We see the same thing at work, I mean, every time we get a new program, it's, ah, you know, after two months, it's fine. It's just, it's just a paradigm shift and people just have to learn to work through it.
Well, and in our case also, it's about you learn it, but you don't just, you learn it to meet the requirement, but that you continue to use it through the year. So we've talked about just doing walkthroughs in the buildings and just doing a little checklist of inventories, or what are we seeing? If we're not seeing you continue to use it, then you need to come back to it again and remind them, because really what the state law requires for our districts now for professional development is that everything be research-based practices. And I think in the heads of some of them, it's like, well, you're telling me everything I did was wrong. No, I'm not. But you know what, we have law achievement in some places, so if we do everything like we did in the last few years, we're just gonna have law achievement, and that's not gonna happen. I mean, that can't happen, continue to happen. So that says practice has to change, and all the practices we're working with them on developing are research-based, so they honestly can look at those and say, yes, I am using effective practices. But it's like anything, when you learn at first, it's uncomfortable and it doesn't feel quite as good. They're also not used to talking to their peers about the work they do. And what that work looks like and how I work in the classroom. So we're going to help coach them through all of that. It'll be fine. It's just a few little growing pains right now. So probably some eccentric part of it. Okay, now last report would be from Beth. And that was about, not the last, but one of the reports is about the tech rollout and how that went.
I'm just going to kind of give you an update, maybe some observations that we've discovered since the rollout. The original rollout date was supposed to be the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, and as it turned out, those were the two days that we had the two classrooms. So our original plan for the rollout really kind of had to be tweaked and, I don't want to say watered down a little bit, but it ended up being different than what we planned. So we had on the twenty-eighth, we got almost all the kids, except for a few volleyball players through the rollout. They all got their computers. And the next day then, I got to meet with every grade level for a forty-five minute period. So I got to see almost all the kids in the entire building to get things set up like emails and their H drives and things like that. So that was a great way to start. Teachers are starting to integrate technology, at least to the best of their abilities. And we have a wide gamut of abilities with our teachers. A lot of them are starting to think a little bit outside their comfort zone of technology and that's great. They're really trying to jump on some things. Right now, our levels of integration are a wide variety, but generally, the first step that teachers start with are kind of replacing the things that they did before with something technology. So if they had a paperwork sheet, they're making it into a digital worksheet and they're emailing it out. So it's those transferring things just from a paper version to a digital version. That's kind of the lowest level of integration. For some of them, that was the most comfortable. They're doing things like emailing out assignments back and forth and things like that. So they're really trying the things that they're most comfortable with. But it's really changed a lot of things in the classroom. With all the stuff that we're doing in PD, what we're really hoping for eventually is to transform what education and what learning looks like in the classroom. And that won't come in the first year, won't come in the first semester. We have to keep thinking of this as a marathon and not a sprint. So I don't expect to see huge transformational changes the first semester, maybe even the first year. But if we keep the course with the PD that we're doing now with what Barb says, pressure with support. So if we keep pushing them to use more tools and we support them learning with these tools, I think we'll see a lot of changes hopefully by the end of the year. And like Barb said, we've got some teachers that are almost up to here with the water in their chin because they're really feeling the pressure. But they're doing it. And I'm very proud of a lot of these teachers that are low level. I want to say Becky Detman, who is a very traditional teacher, but she's tried some things in her classroom that others haven't and she's really willing and that's awesome.
Are you seeing, are you seeing more teachers traditionally my age, fifty and older, that struggle with stuff than the younger teachers?
Oh, yes. But we're also finding too that we assume that new teachers coming out of college know way more than they do and they don't. So when they come out of college, they're not always nearly as techy as we assume they're going to be.
One of the students that I have, I had in the curriculum design class, the BV is actually a student teacher here right now. And I remember when I introduced Dropbox to her class, there was not one student of the twenty-one or twenty-two that had ever heard of Dropbox. And I'm like, okay, you're twenty-one or twenty, twenty, twenty-one years old. But nobody had heard of it, nobody had used it. And I'm like, oh, we're going to use it with the old teacher here.
That's great. You can market start a real impression.
Yeah. Yep, they had Tammy Vine.
There's a wide range of experience. And then in teacher prep programs, there's a wide, a wide range of what their coursework is using technology in their ed program, in their undergrad degree. So sometimes it's also personal interest in the parent's kids.
Well, I think somewhat we're finding out too that, you know, some of these kids are coming up with four years of a one-to-one situation like us. And they're going into college and in some cases, they're stepping back in terms of technology and what those professors, because those professors haven't been in a high school situation. So they're teaching the way they did when they were in school. So a lot of times, higher ed doesn't use technology that much, so they don't require it. So beginning of teachers don't know as much as we thought they did in some cases, unless they had Barb.
We have some more experienced teachers who are very capable, very. We have some who are not. But we have some who are so, I'd say that we can't take a person's teaching experience and say, more is, you know, more tech, knowledge, ability, medium amount, less. I think it's very individual. So this is just trying to push everybody to the same line, try to get across the board. We know that everyone has that. So peer tech team of high school students. I was working with Beth last week and she got a text from a girl who said, oh, somebody just asked me to come and teach them how to use iMovie. And I was, I mean, and that seems like a very easy thing for many people to do, but you know what? If you're a little bit phobic about it, that's a big deal. And it was with that particular teacher. And the teacher was very willing to have that student work with her. So those kids aren't getting a lot of mileage to teachers as well. And I think in return, the kids are really seeing personalities of teachers in different framework than they do if they just have it in class. But it's better this month than it was a month ago. It will be better in two months and we'll make progress.
Just a couple of quick observations. It's a constant battle for Robert and I to think about, what do we block? What do we not block? We're a very progressive school in terms of what we don't block in our firewall for students. We haven't blocked Facebook. We haven't blocked a whole lot of things. A lot of one-to-school, one-to-one schools have. We would rather teach them to control themselves, to use proper etiquette, to learn how to use the tools appropriately. Well, now we're finding that our students can't necessarily do that when they've got a computer with them all the time. So it's a constant battle for us to say, okay, it's one side, we want the students to be able to have access to the tools they need and make some choices. The other side, how do we keep them safe? How do we keep these distractions away from them? So that they can do more learning and not feel all these other things coming like Facebook chatting and whatever. The other thing that we've, we've decided, and maybe Chris can attest that she probably heard it from Emma. We blocked Spotify and Pandora, which is music streaming, and that caused quite a stir. But we had a lot of kids that were streaming music while class was going on, had their earbuds in, but that just takes our bandwidth and we have to keep that sacred. So that we can use our internet bandwidth that we have for education. And they were not happy with that. The next thing we might, the counter I've talked about is, is it time to block other sites? Possibly Facebook? We don't know. Now it's public. So we'll see. But, but it's a huge distraction and it's up all the time. So it's learning and learning to handle it and distractions. So we're constantly reevaluating that stuff. And we don't know the right answers. It's kind of a learn as you go.
I think that's a good thought. The problem is, is the kid to adult ratio. You know, I mean, if it was, if it was much less, then we could, we could control it a little more, I think. I love the thought. I just think it's, you know, it's a little more than we can handle.
What is the benefit for having Facebook during school?
Well, we have, like, our school Facebook page, I'm posting it to it all the time and it's getting great coverage. We have elementary teachers that are sending stuff home. They might have iPhone and they take pictures of kids while they're in the classroom or on a field trip and they're posting it to the school Facebook page or their Facebook page and it goes off to the parents. So we are using it to get information out. Teachers aren't asking students to use Facebook for lessons. But we also, I believe, have the capabilities or we can get the capabilities where we can have, adults have that access. We can lock it off to students from eight to four and then they can have it after that. So we have some options we're looking into if that's the route we choose to go. We just need to know what our options are. We just want to keep everyone safe, but also keep the distractions away so kids are focused on what they need to get out of the building. And the last thing we're kind of looking at is an LMS, which is a learning management system. It's become very apparent to the teachers that they need a system that all students and teachers can submit assignments and disseminate assignments easily in one platform. Some people are using Dropbox. Some people are using email and then they have all these hundreds of emails that come in. Some people use Google Docs. It would be nice if we all have one system where they can drop assignments in, they can be graded and sent back to the students in folders. They also have where you can put lesson plans on there and post videos. So if the FFA kids are in Indianapolis, the teacher can still put the stuff up there. Kids can get on their computers, still get assignments done while they're gone out of the building. Learning doesn't, learning doesn't stop while they're out of the building. We want to have those kids when they go to FFA and the Orlando trip and the Chicago trip and miss all these days of school where they can still keep learning if they have their computer. And that's part of, one of the things we really wanted to happen was continual learning with these laptops. So we're working on that. We're looking at three different possible platforms. They come at a variety of costs. And we just need to see what we want to have in the platform. And I've got three demos coming up in the next three weeks. So it'll be something to really help the teachers and students manage all that stuff that comes and goes.
I listen to the students on that too. If they've got a favorite way to submit their stuff and get their information, that might be something to consider because it's one less thing to worry about. I don't know. I've happened to email them. We can do it this other way.
Exactly. And the great thing is, we have student tech teams that, they're vocal. They're kind of our guinea pigs for a lot of things. So we can use them as, would you try these out for us and tell us what you think? Because we definitely need their perspective too. So maybe very helpful.
Debbie, did you want to say anything about what was submitted in the report packet? There was the documents, additional information about standards-based grading?
Yeah, I could run down that quick. I just provided you a sample of what is possible standard-based report cards would look like. As you can see, this is from a few years back, two thousand ten, two thousand eleven. You get online, you can find hundreds, probably thousands of these out there. This one is a sixth grade sample. You'll notice that it's broken down into the first section there on the, on the first page, top half is English language arts. And it's broken up into reading, listening, and speaking, word study, writing, research. And then if you notice, there's three columns on the right-hand side with asterisks in them. Those three columns represent, they're on a trimester schedule is what that is. There's a marking at the very bottom of the front page. There's a marking system, a grading key. And it's, their grading key goes from four down to one. And it explains what a four is, what a three is, all the way down to a one. There's a blank there, asterisk there that says not assessed at this time. So if something is listed, for example, under mathematics, maybe the second standard applies number concept, and I can't even read the rest of it. Factors, multiplies, least common multiple, and greatest common denominator. If that's not done in the first trimester, they just put that asterisk in there, meaning it's not even taught during this time. It might only be a third trimester component. So that's why that is there. Basically, all of these elements under English language arts, under mathematics, there would be some type of evidence that a teacher would have, whether that's some different assessments, whether that's a body of evidence that there's some writings that the student has done and has stored in an electronic portfolio, that type of thing. But there would be some evidence behind why that student scored a three or scored a two. Also, in this marking system, there is not, it's not transferred into an A, a B, a C, D, or F. That again is totally up to the school district and what the school thinks its community, its students, its parents need. This one would just give the mark of a three or a two and not transfer it into a grade whatsoever. Backside is really the same type of stuff where science, social studies, art, and music. And then down at the bottom is qualities of a learner. Those are basically employability skills, 21st century skills. Those do not impact a grade at all. They are recorded so that the parent and the student knows your child's not getting to class on time, your child's not cooperating very well with peers, that type of thing. But it does not impact the academic grade, which is one of the things that stands out with standard-based recording as compared to what we currently do in school. So like I said, this is just an example. It doesn't mean that this is what we'd eventually come up with exactly, you know, at ESAC Middle School. And by the way, standard-based grading is something that, right now, I'm only talking about with the middle schools. I'm not speaking for the high school or the elementary. I'm just speaking to what we've been talking about at the middle school. So I thought I'd provide you just with a sample of what possibilities could be. If you have any questions, I'd certainly try to help you with them.
Seems like the teacher over a certain period of time assesses the student in his or her own, you know, thoughts. I mean, this, you know, this could change from one teacher to another, obviously, right?
Can you go a little deeper with that?
Well, it looks to me like I'm the teacher, you're the student. I sit down here and say, okay, reading. Then he does a pretty good job of identifying words. But then Brent might say, eh, no, he doesn't do a very good job.
I'd have, you would have, Chris, some basis for that evaluation of me and so would Brent. So it would be, you have some type of a rubric probably that would say, here's what I'm looking for. If you do this, you're going to get marked as a four. If you're doing this, but you left out this, you'd be marked as a three. So basically, hopefully, you and Brent's evaluation of me would be pretty similar. And, you know, hopefully, that collaboration is happening between those teachers, between you two so that you know what's, what each other expects in a good writing or in a good math product.
Are there any schools that do it just in elementary or just in middle school or just in the high school that you're aware of? Or do they, do they just decide, we're going to work these kids up this way? Or how do they usually get implemented?
Excellent question. Usually, it's elementary and then middle school. I haven't seen a high school doing it yet, especially in our state. I've heard of them outside of our state doing it, but I'm not familiar with one in our state. Obviously, that would be, as kids go through the elementary, they're getting used to it there. Parents are used to it. It'd be nice to continue that at the, at the middle school. And then, you know, as a couple of you pointed out, there's different implications at high school that really need to be thought through, talked about amongst the staff and to the community about, you know, what does this mean? What does this do? How is this looked at by other institutions outside of the, the high school? So.
Hard to be proficient in the Iowa Core. This lends itself to being able to identify whether that happens or not. And it does, the report cards will look very, very different. And they'd be aligned to what Iowa Core looks like in science, social studies, reading, and our 21st century skills. To be measuring what state law says we're to be teaching very early and very aggressively. There are a couple of secondary schools in Iowa, the Des Moines Public Schools, that have just two or three buildings in their middle school. That, I'm pretty sure I read this on paper, that there are two or three middle schools in the Des Moines Public School system that are implementing standard-based reporting. I think Ankeny did that, didn't they?
Ankeny's looking at it. Walk. He has done it. They've done it. Their, their middle schools are, they're changing so fast. They were five-eight. Now I think they're moving to more of a six-eight philosophy. But their middle schools have implemented, just at the fifth and sixth grade level, seventh and eighth, they're doing parts of it, but they're still doing the, the grading with the A, B, C, D. Cedar Rapids schools are doing it as, as a whole school system, school district. Manson's currently, Manson's about where we are, I think, maybe a little bit behind where we are in our research of it. One thing that this has really done along with the Iowa Core, it's really made our teachers look at and discuss what do our standards mean? What are we looking for in our students? To make sure that, you know, we're measuring this correctly.
Last, I was going to comment on it, but if you look at this and you sit back and you got twenty-three or twenty-five kids in your class and you kind of fill this out on them. I mean, that'd be a daunting task. It'd really make you think, first off, like you said, the six or seven things that make this box either a four or a three. You gotta link it through with that student. Pulling your mind, pull that out and then there's the next box all the way down. So you'd have to start thinking about how So, you'd have to start thinking about how everything is related versus just, oh, he's a pretty good kid and does most of the stuff on time. He gets beaten, you know, beat pieces.
Well, and if you look at the way those are written, to Brent, it's like what you're seeing. Several of the lines, it's talking about utilizes, supplies, demonstrates, writes, uses, selects. It's not just, it doesn't say, no, 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 which is a very low level of group. We have a taxonomy we use in school and education called Goose taxonomy, and that's the lowest level. When we look at verbs like applies, that's a way, hi, my taxonomy about, you have several steps that kids have to go through. They're going to be able to potentially apply it somewhere else. And we talk to students when we write units about, that they have to transfer what they know and understand to new situations that they've never seen before on their own. So, I can't get in a group and do it. I can't have to have tons of assistance from my teacher. I can't have that. Or what I have to say as a teacher is, I can't tell you that the student really can do this. And then I have to practice, I have to demonstrate this in a new situation. It's not just a new worksheet, but it's a new task and a new performance. So, it really, really takes lots of thinking and organization. But very worthwhile.
Our organization is key. We've got one teacher who's really, Mrs. Muggenbergh, she has really organized and structured her classroom so that this fits. But she's still using the traditional grading model, but she's made her curriculum work so that when we do, you know, eventually get to that point of, hey, we think we're ready to shift over and do what's right here for kids, it's going to fit in just, just right, so... But it's all about organization.
Okay. Anybody got any other questions for anybody? Thank you, guys. All right, thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. Let's move on to seven A, discussing or approved early graduation request.
Yep, Dylan Mahan asked about the requirements of early graduation. And honestly, somehow, he just did not understand how many credits he had and that that was, the number of credits he was going to need for graduation and for the middle school year. So, that was just truly a slip up, really not on the part of our counselor so much, it's just on Dylan's behalf. And he said that, and I just didn't really understand and realize that. So, what he's asking is permission to participate in early graduation. He has enough credits, everything's on track, and I really urge you to approve that for him.
So...
Second.
I agree with that. I have a motion of a second. Lisa, do you have anything to say about it or no? I, I agree with it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries four oh.
It'll be aye.
Yeah, I think that was the right thing to do. Most sense of cold night.
Okay, seven B, discussing or approved school makeup day.
In the current school calendar, there are forty hours more time scheduled in the current calendar for students than what's required by law. Okay? And we used, our days are six and two-thirds hours per day. There's two of those days during this beginning part of school. And the principals and I sat down and talked about it, and we would really, we really feel comfortable asking you to make up one of those dates at the present time and do that on the November tenth, which was to be a no-school professional development day. And it won't impact the work agreement with the union and with employees. It will be one fewer professional development days than we have quite a few. So, we don't see that as problematic. But it just feels better maybe to bring one of those dates back into the calendar and see what winter brings us. What could happen is that at the end of the year, we get toward that end of the year, and we haven't used any of those additional hours past the required by state law, we could decide, could make the decision that school ends a day or two earlier than for students, okay? We may not, okay? And that will just be, we'll talk about that at that time. But right now, I recommend that we change November tenth from the teacher work day, professional development day, and a no-school day for students to a school day for kids.
I make that motion concerning, everything I've heard about this one is really careful.
Second.
I have a motion of a second to approve using November tenth as a, as a makeup day. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries... Okay, seven C, discussing or approved W O V A foundation members.
Yep, Bush Briggs is the chairman of the W O V A Foundation. And he called and let us know that, that he, the, the current group of foundation members recommend Ben Wallace and Emily Bush to replace Neil Steinkamp and Glenn Dederman on the W O V A Foundation. And Ben and Emily have been notified and have been asked and have said yes, so...
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion of a second to approve Ben Wallace and Emily Bush as the new W O V A foundation members. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
That's fine. Just note that that foundation has changed its name to Esack County.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But it's the old W O V A foundation.
Who did you say they were replacing?
Glenn Dederman and Neil Steinkamp will be finished.
Okay, no resignations today? So, we've got some contracts.
We've got an additional sheet, I think, that John pushed in front of here. Uh, for Joseph Zikman for food service, Kathy Bob Homer for food service, Kristen Foo for no-school student council advisor. And that's, that's a shared agreement, so I split the money on that. And then, our Fox Ed, the associate at our Fox Ed building is a licensed teacher. Jean Pruness now our yellow coordinator, spends about two periods a day working on English Language Learner work. And so, she truly is the teacher at the time Walkie's out of the building. So, we'd like to offer a quarter-time Fox Ed teacher agreement. And then, the rest of her day would be at the ring she currently receives, I'm still seeing.
Kristen Foo, is that shared with?
Tristan.
Tristan.
Okay, I see. I'd entertain a motion to approve the contracts as stated.
So...
Second. I have a motion of a second to approve the four contracts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
I'm going to be in here.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Ready to keep going?
Sure.
I'm ready. Called order the annual organizational meeting. Open the floor for nominations for president. Nomination's going to require a second, and you may nominate yourself.
I nominate Chris. I make the motion that nomination cease.
Second. All right, so I have, Chris has been nominated, and I have a motion of a second to nomination cease. All those in favor of nominating, or ceasing nominations, say aye.
Aye.
All right, that part carries.
Nay.
Right, not wrong.
You're brilliant, buddy.
I know.
That part carries anyhow. So, all those in favor of appointing Chris as president, say so by voting aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Chris, you are appointed president by vote of three zero.
Thanks, guys.
I'll now open the floor for nominations for vice president.
It was a good year. I'd, I might as well nominate.
Second. Any other nominations?
I'll give it that.
I'd entertain a motion to cease nominations.
So...
Second.
All those in favor of ceasing nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Carries four zero. All those in favor of appointing Brent as vice president, say aye.
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 Opposed? Four zero. Chris, so, Chris and Brent, please stand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, in the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the office of president for Chris and vice president for Brent in the Esack County Community School District as now or hereafter required by law?
I will.
Thank you.
I will.
You will. It's your reading, Chris.
Okay. Discussing or approved superintendent recommendations on, and we can do all of these together, right, A through K?
Yes, um, we can discuss them first. Sack County, or Sack Community Center Board Representative Amanda has agreed to do that. So, you can cross Brent off and you can put Amanda.
Which one is that, aye?
Which one?
Yes. And there was some question about the REIT commission.
I don't think I've ever been called to a meeting.
No, it's, it's a part of the auditors department. And so, I talked to Jim, and he asked that we go ahead and appoint somebody in case there is a meeting this year. Then he'll get ahold of you. The county conference board is with the assessors office, that's the one you're used to.
I think, I think the reason why the REIT came up is because two cities in Sack County applied for a REIT grant this year, and we did have a meeting. And since Wall Lake was one of the cities, I represented the school that day. Because I was there, so, yeah.
Do you want to represent all the time?
Hmm, you're really good at that stuff.
Oh, there you go.
I'll be president if you do this, okay?
That's, that's a dream.
So, anything else on there? I mean, all the other stuff on there is just what we do every year, right? Yeah.
Same as last year.
I make the motion to approve the recommendations as so stated by the superintendent.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion in a second to approve the superintendent recommendations as listed here, A through K. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay, hold on. Okay, so, future agenda items and set dates. Wasn't anything we didn't do that?
What did we have on? What did we have for agenda? We can't remember.
Correct.
Yeah.
We have a special ed plan that has to be approved for a school improvement plan that takes a board approval. We need a special ed deficit.
Oh, that's right. Filed the annual report and the special ed report and transportation report last Monday. It was a debate. And special ed had the deficit about the same amount as the prior year. We're allowed to levy back to that if you so choose, so we'll put that on next month's agenda.
Was that like sixty-eight thousand last year?
I think this year was eighty-two. Don't quote me on that, I'm not sure, so... We'll get the numbers for you, and I'll let you know what that means per thousand, you know, we're talking about.
We probably need to talk about college parents and students in our high school content. Students have more than twenty-three credits as a course load for a year. Students are supposed to pay for the credits over twenty-three. And schools in our conference have been talking about that. There aren't very many kids. Every year, we look at our...
That's per year, Laura?
Per year, per year. So, if we looked at our junior year, their senior year, some of them in their senior year. And I think right now, we have five students. And I'm talking about billing those, it would be for the future. We really are obligated to ask them to pay for anything over that number of twenty-three credits per year. Because what it does is it really says they're a full-time student college student. So, if they pay for that credit, then they still stay on our account. And really, I don't think that will be issues with parents because...
Will it do anything with Iowa High School Association, College of...
No, this is, this is recommendations from the community college, just reminding us that we should be doing this. So, it came directly from the community college, it's what the question was.
So, we have five students here, what about the rest of the conferences there?
They have anything from nobody to seven, eight, ten kids. And then, next year, one that, a school that might have had no one, might have four.
So, it's all over the board.
Yeah, and there's three different ways, three different recommendations for payment. And they're much, a pretty low payment per credit or a pretty high, depending on how kids are registered. So, what we'll do next, let me just talk to you about what that is. If you don't even vote on it, but at least consider it and talk about it. Amanda is registering students right now, juniors for their senior year. She said, how do I advise them? And I just said, you advise them just like you advise them, because there are so few. Just go ahead and sign them up, and then we make a decision at the board table, and we'll inform them, and then they can decide. Now, the only way that doesn't apply is if a student takes twelve credits at DMAC in Carroll and then takes twelve credits here, then that twenty-four credit doesn't apply because they're only in our house taking twelve of those. So, there's some, some room in the language with it. And the reason we talked about it at our conference superintendent's meeting is nobody's clear about what they should do. So, we were just trying to say, maybe it would be good in our conference, for the schools in our cluster, that we all have some similar decision, but we could come up with an agreement. So, we just decided to leave it to each board to deal with it. So, it won't be a huge issue. But again, we'll be letting families know when any advance. So, basically, what we're still meaning is, over two years, if students could take that many credits, they could take forty-six credits and still not pay for them. So, if, when you think of it in those terms, you know, they're still offered a lot of opportunity, of credit that they don't pay for.
What do the credits cost?
That's, that's what they're...
That part of that rate?
It's from about thirty-some dollars an hour to two-hundred-some dollars an hour, depending on what kind of course they're taking.
If you're going to be a lawyer, it costs you two hundred bucks.
Now, the current technical courses cost less per credit. And then, the courses in the arts and sciences cost a little more. And then, if they're filed under some other kind of, I forget the acronym for it, then there's kind of a middle amount, and it's totally up to the school how they decide to handle it. And I'll have some information for you to take a look at, so... But it just needs to go on the next agenda. What's the building?
We should talk about the Fox Ed building. We moved them out last winter with the sewer issue, and nothing's changed, so...
Can we do, can we do anything with the...
For a warm winter.
What I, what we plan to do is tell you how much it's going to cost to fix it and what we think that building may cost us over the next five years and then...
There's some to it, that's the thing.
Well, you're going to have to put in basically a grinder pump or...
With pressure? Well, it's not so bad, but the problem is it freezes between where you're trying to get it to.
I watched a movie one time. It was called The Monkey.
Yeah.
What about...
We'll have some information for...
At the end, it was really nice.
Yeah, I've mentioned that Kevin, James, Marvin.
Well, that's what I was thinking, since we said that they're two thousand dollars.
There's some okay things about that, but there's some, you know, there are...
Yeah, I'm sure there is.
...that as well. So, but what we, we just need to start talking about it so we don't let it freeze up and say, gosh, no, we're just...
You know, one other thing that we need to talk about, and I, I really truly hate to bring this up because I don't want to talk about it, but we need to start talking about what we're going to do as far as a superintendent for, you know, advertising, interviewing, you know, if we want to ask Barbara to come back, if we want to get it out there for other people. We really need to start talking about that too. I was going to ask, I was going to ask that one too.
Are you, are you okay over there?
I don't know. I'm afraid it's going to happen when we go to football practice.
Uh, we also need to put in our annual goals, so that'd be the replacement goals from that I showed, that I showed you tonight. We'll have those ready for you next month.
The date would be, the third Monday would be the October twentieth. We'd be at the Sack Elementary at six, unless there's a conflict. The school calendar has a JV football game at Wall Lake. Did I see that?
We're done with football then, right? I'm going to go to play in the gym. I hope not, but... The way we played yesterday, probably won't. Yeah, so I guess...
Round for the twentieth?
Yeah.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, right around there.
Who is your...
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks for your help, guys.
Thank you.